Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. This is July 17th, 2025, regular meeting of the Wasika School Board. It's 5:30 PM and we are in the Central Building, second floor conference room, and we will start, as usual, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we start, we do have a new student representative, and her name is Violet Rohr. And want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. My name is Violet Rohr, like you said. I'm the junior class school board representative. Incoming junior, if that wasn't obvious. I do marching band, cross-country, track, speech, jazz band, a little bit of everything.
Welcome. Glad to have you on.
Yeah, welcome. Approval of agenda.
We approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. No visitors this evening. We'll move on to organization of the school board at this time. Motion for item A.
A motion to designate medical facility.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and a second to designate medical facility, the Wasika Naval Clinic. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Need a motion for the resolution for item B. I'm going to read that first. Ms. Sarah Brandt, Director of Business Services, will be authorized to make payment prior to board approval of claims that cannot be deferred until the next board meeting without loss to the District of discount privileges. And furthermore, Mrs. Brandt, Ms. Brandt is authorized to initiate and transact electronic fund transfers for the purpose of investment of excess monies and for payment of bond principal and interest. Said authority is delegated pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 1979, Section 471.38, Subdivision 3, and Minnesota Statutes 1979, 1979, Section 123.35, Subdivision 15.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second for item B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item C.
I'll make a motion to approve the consideration of support services.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second for consideration of support services. Need to do anything there?
No, because it's a motion, not a resolution, so you don't have to read it.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And finally, motion for item D. And Alyssa's going to do some reading for us.
I, Alyssa Bowers, Clerk of the School Board of Independent School District Number 829, do hereby certify that a regular meeting of the school board of the Independent School District duly and regularly called and held at the Central Building, second floor conference room in Wasika, Minnesota, on the 17th day of July 2025, there being a quorum of said board present, the following was unanimously passed, as appears from the records of said school district, and is now in full force and effect. Be it resolved that the Keen Bank of Wasika, the Midwest Bank of Wasika, and the MSD Liquid Asset Funds US Bank has designated of this Corporation B and is hereby requested, authorized, and directed to honor checks, drafts, or other orders for the payment of money drawn in this school district's name, including those drawn to the individual order of any person or persons whose names or names appear therein as signer or signers thereof, when bearing or purporting to bear the FAS Milli signature of any three of the following: Chairman Dave Dunn, Clerk Alyssa Bowers, Treasurer Scott Demille. The Midwest Bank, Keen Bank, and the MSD Liquid Asset Fund US Bank shall be entitled to honor and to charge this school district for such checks, drafts, or other orders, regardless of by whom or by what means the FAS Milli signature or signatures thereon may have been affixed thereto, if such FAS Milli signature or signatures resemble the FAS Milli specimens duly certified to or filed with the Midwest Bank, the Keen Bank of Wasika, and the MSD Liquid Asset Fund US Bank by the clerk or other officer of this school district. Be it further resolved that any and all resolutions herefore adopted by the school board of this school district and certified to the Midwest Bank, Keen Bank, and MSD Liquid Asset Fund US Bank as governing during the duration of this school district's accounts with it and hereby continue in full force and effect, except as the same may be supplemented or modified by the foregoing part of this resolution.
All right, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and a second for the consideration of resolution for machine signed signatures. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, payment of claims. Mr. Preib.
I have reviewed the claims for the month of June and recommend payment for those claims. Accounts payable: $1,534,051.95. Dental is not yet available. And then the payroll would be $947,657.58. Second.
Okay. All in favor of the motion for payment of claims, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving right along, consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right. Information items. Dr. Hartsworth.
Well, good evening. Tonight, from my strategic plan update, I'm going to speak primarily to the long-term facility maintenance 10-year plan that you have in front of you to review for this evening. So, the 10-year plan is something we have to do each year. We develop an expenditure and revenue projection for the long-term facilities, sustainability of our district. And we need to get this approved by the end of July every school year. Every year, this changes somewhat based on what we see as we know that coming out the next five, seven years is only as little a prediction as what you know at that particular time. For those of you who haven't remembered this from last year, you may have seen, remember seeing quite a bit of negative fund balance projections for years six, seven, eight, and beyond. We took a little different approach this particular year because we had access to some different levy authority based on the legislative session we just finished. So, a couple assumptions that I want to bring to your attention for you to look at. If you look at the document in the blue, kind of towards the bottom, where it says FY '25 and '26 revenue projection model, that red language right there, right below there, it starts $739,000. That's our end-of-the-year fund balance on any given year. So, that's a year to really, that's a number to hone in on. So, as you can see going across the board, in this plan, we will project to have a positive fund balance in every year of this 10-year facility plan. A couple things that we've done to be able to get there. First is we've removed several projects that have thus far been unbudgeted. We're not sure what priorities they were going to be. We weren't sure where they were going to land. We opted not to leave those in the plan. So, for example, some parking lot work here at Central, some, got cut off here, but some expansion joint work at Hartley. There's about $200,000 worth of work at Hartley on accessibility issues that we're going to defer for right now as we continue to see what our future is for that building. Other things have also come, priorities have come up. Circuit break-up panels at Hartley have become a higher priority, so we need to get that replaced. We know the showers and floor drains and the men's and visitors locker rooms at the high school are going to need some attention in the next two years. And there's a wall, they call it the K-wall, but it's kind of where that natural light comes in in the commons at WIS that has leaked for a number of years that we're going to get that work done here in the foreseeable future. So, working through those sort of things, and there was going to be a recommissioning of the HVAC system here at Central. We're not going to do that right now. We're going to push that off and see where that needs to land. But what you'll notice, particularly if you look at, starting to get to fiscal year '29 and '30, you'll see that those expenditures go up significantly. So, those are the years where those roofing projects had been on our plan previously. We need to get done in those fiscal years for warranty based on our currently plan. The legislature did pass a bill this summer that the district is able to levy on board authority for roofing projects over $100,000. And so, we built that into this plan thinking if there's a way to keep us in the black on those particular years, that would be a way we'd have to do it based on our current plan. We are not committing, based on this plan, to decide to do that. We've confirmed that with MDE. We've had those conversations internally. This is a fluid plan. I mean, think about the swing from this last year to this year, what we did. And so, by approving this plan, you're not approving any kind of levy on roofing projects or anything like that. The next piece is, and this was something that was a comment that we had earlier in the week in one of my discussions, is because our facility assessment is coming right around the time when this needs to be approved, ideally, maybe that would have come before. But because it's a fluid plan, we know how things go. So, we'll get some new information in the next couple months here on how we need to reprioritize things. So, as opposed to focusing past FY '27 and beyond, we've kind of prioritized the year, the projects we had for this year and next year. As of this moment, the plan looks to be sustainable on paper at this moment. And then we see what the facility assessment does, what the board decides to do for any kind of levy authority in those years. And we have that option. So, that's kind of what I'm building in for you there on the expenditures. The other side is the revenue side, which is less interesting from a project standpoint, but more of a, here's how much comes from state aid, here how much comes from levy. So, you get a sense that, I think, want to say roughly 43-ish percent on any given year is aid, and then there's some levy that goes along with that that is part of the LTFM calculation. And so, we're projecting, you know, the next 10 years to be where they are. I think some of the more, I think I hit some of the big ones. There is some new legislation around moving to LED lighting and not being able to purchase fluorescent lighting. And so, we've got some dollars baked into this plan to be able to support upgrading when the time comes. Not something that has to happen immediately. It's more of a replacement type thing. And there's some, I know, grant dollars that Sarah and Jeff are looking at with some of those as well, and savings plans and things like that. But that's built into the budget as of right now. So, I present this to you. This is information, of course, for what questions you have. Will be asked to approve this later on in the meeting. There also is a statement of assurances that will be in separate agenda item that you'll be asked to approve. And that's just that I'm going to follow all laws and appropriate policies when we do our facility maintenance levy work.
So, if you were to levy for a roof project, would that be just a one-year levy then? Is that what you're saying? So, we would levy specifically for that roof, right? Is that correct?
Right.
That'd be one-time deal.
It's a one-time thing. Mm-hmm. Yeah. And right now, it's, if you add them all up, it's about 3.7 million. But 900,000 here, 1.2 million here. One of them we might decide not to do if we're not going to do with that building any longer and just fix the repairs that particular year. So, there's options to do it. It's one year at a time, decision-making, and not, you don't need to commit until that particular levy year.
Any other questions?
I think the Facility Committee is probably doing a little bit of a double take because the one we saw a few months ago had a lot of red on it. But then we moved some, we had to prioritize some things just for the sake of living within your means and creating a budget. And then we'll look at what our next steps are when we get further down the road.
Well, I think it's fair to say we had a conversation about that.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, yeah, so, I mean, there's reason with it.
Absolutely.
Good reason, and, like you said, living within our means, so.
Yeah, very good.
Did the...
Yeah, we talked about it, yeah. Thanks for saying that.
Did the state set aside, or is going to set aside, a pot of money for this to help schools pay? Nope. Local, it's all local.
Yeah.
They're just giving us the authority to do it?
Yeah. So, right now, I mean, right now, you do have the authority as a board to do air quality projects on board authority if you needed to. So, if we really needed an HVAC project done that was beyond the scope of our LTFM budget and it was a $9 million project, you would have the authority to do that right now. A lot of districts use that in conjunction with a bigger, a bigger bond project or something. This just adds roofing to that, what they kind of call above-the-line type piece. And I think most of it's because communities understand that. They know they need to keep, you need to keep your roofs up. You need to keep your air quality systems up. And so, it's, rather than have to go to a bond for that type of project, you have, you certainly could go to a bond. You could take it to a vote. And I think a lot of communities do. So, they have that communication with their stakeholders, but you wouldn't be required to. For, these are usually smaller projects, $1 million, 1.5 million, that sort of thing.
I'll say in my, just my experience at work, you know, we've done a lot of HVAC upgrade and you'll be working on the job and you'd be like, this roof really needs to be going with this project. But they couldn't back then.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. On to the money lady, Sarah.
All right, I just have one report to share with you tonight. I didn't bring a revenue comparison to the board because much of the revenue work is reconciling grants, booking year-end receivables based on total student enrollment counts, property tax levy, that type of thing. So, doing a presentation tonight would, I think, be skewed and not complete. So, that's something I can bring in a later month. But tonight, I thought we'd focus on the expenditure budget, or the expenditure budget to actual comparison. If you look at salaries and wages in the employee benefits categories, those are generally fully complete. I think we have one small payroll that will be paid at the end of August for any, like, time sheets that haven't come in yet to the district office, but that should be fairly small. Wages and benefits have all been included in employee payrolls and posted to the general ledger. So, those are very well on track. Purchase services and the remaining categories do somewhat have some work yet to be done. You know, we still have invoices that we have yet to receive or yet to pay. So, those expenditure amounts will be fully completed as we pay those bills or make those journal entries. But as you can see, if you look at the total general fund bottom line, we are on track and in line with where we have been in prior years as actual expenses as a percent of budget. And some of the same principles apply to the remaining funds below where we have year-end accounting work yet to do, some journal entries to post, some reconciliations to do. And that all takes place over the next few months as we head towards that audit date in the middle of October.
Okay.
Fairly simple, but I'll take any questions.
You know, the federal government has recently held back some funds for public schools. If that happens or continues to happen, how much is that affecting Wasika Public Schools? Any idea? A dollar amount?
Yeah. Our Title II and Title IV grant allocations for '25, '26 is about $42,000 total.
Okay.
It's a very, fairly small portion of our overall budget.
Okay. And how would we cover that?
Well, come out of fund balance or come out of budget reduction areas if we had to do it. I think what we're finding with many of these federal decisions is that as the lawsuits finish up, the monies are coming. And so, we're fortunate that it's not a cash flow issue for us with that dollar value. I foresee the proceeds coming as expected over time because it's in congressional law that those are already allocated and nowhere to. So, there's not really any kind of legal standing to be able to withhold those funds. They can delay it, and as they are. And if we were a larger district or potentially a district with a different demographic, cash flow might be an issue. We're very fortunate that we're not.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to committee and board member reports. Mr. Schefter, would you like to start us off, please?
Sure. Since our last meeting, we had a policy committee meeting earlier this week and went through the policies that we're going to review and didn't find much of any changes on those. We also had a finance committee meeting earlier today and covered a number of things, some more of this LTFM things and other things that may be impacting we'll be reviewing. Spent some time at the county fair a couple times and got to see a lot of people, so that was enjoyable. Those are the board-related things I've done.
Okay, thank you. Scott?
So, my first one was the superintendent evaluation. We reviewed the board evaluations on the superintendent, and that'll be coming to you later. And then we also had finances, and we pretty much will cover everything that we did there.
Okay.
Yeah, similar to what was just said. I had a policy meeting, no major changes with the policies, a few minor changes, and then also superintendent evaluation, which will...
All right, thank you. Alyssa?
Same, the superintendent evaluation meeting and then the finance meeting that Sarah covered mostly, I mean, covered everything tonight that we discussed.
Sarah?
Didn't have anything. You guys are doing a good job.
Appreciate it. Charlie?
Well, I've been on the negotiations committee, so we had a conversation with food service. I think we've got, I think we got agreement there, is that correct? Yes. A pair of professionals, we negotiated with that. We did have a facilities meeting here on 26, so.
It's coming up, right?
Well, it's...
Was, yeah, oh, in June.
Yep. Oh, yeah, we're in July. Okay. So, yeah, negotiations, clerical, basically, we'll get that, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Grant, you want to, any recognition?
Violet, do you have anything you want to update us?
Oh.
Not really? First meeting? Okay.
No.
Good deal. Sure didn't forget to ask, that's all.
I wasn't going to put her on the spot there.
Yeah.
All right.
I just wanted to say thanks to all the fair board and all the work that was put together to make the fair happen. It was great weather. It was great to see lots of people out there and created great visibility for the school as well. So, thank you to everybody who contributed to that.
I don't have anything today.
Nothing new?
Nothing new.
That's all right.
Yeah, it was nice to talk to people at the fair, and the FFA barnyard looked nice and well-kept. And so, thank you to the FFA kids and to them.
Okay.
Dave, I think I saw you out at Clear Lake Park this weekend, this last week, didn't I? Dave was out there with his leaf blower and his trimmer, keeping that basketball court looking nice. So, thanks, Dave.
That was me. Well, thank you.
I just want to say thanks, community. Ed, I think everything that I've had kids involved in, there's been great communication, whether it's raining or things are getting moved. I think I'm getting blasted texts and emails and Facebook, and it's good.
I did just a ground screw there. The ground screw is keeping the grass mowed. They've had a lot of that, been to a few ballgames or soccer meets, and fields are kept nice. And should give a shout-out to them folks that do that on a regular basis, so.
Okay. And I was just going to recognize our driver's ed, John Hanson, and retired teacher, Dave Brins. And I think there might be another one or two that do...
Yeah, not positive how many hours they work. Those are the two primary.
Yeah. Do drivers' training. You know, we're one of the few schools that does that anymore. Most schools have gone to, the actual drivers' training in a vehicle has gone to a private business, I guess. Is that the way it is in Mankato?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, I know it's, that's the way it is in Oatana and a lot of other schools, so. But we still do it as part of the school. So, thanks to those people for continuing to do that. All right. We need to move to a closed session, so could we, to discuss negotiations? So, could we have a motion to do that, please?
I make a motion to go to a closed session?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and a second to go to a closed session. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
And what we will do is we will pause the Facebook feed for now, but Chuck is going to stick around as long as we don't take too long. And then we'll restart the Facebook feed when we come back and finish the meeting in that regard. So, that's how that'll be.
Okay. Okay, we are back into our public session of our public school board meeting. In our closed session, we briefly discussed some information about negotiations and the superintendent's evaluation. We'll move on then to our action items, of which we have a few this evening. Motion to approve item A.
I'll make a motion to approve the Minnesota School Board Association and renewal of the MSBA's policy service.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item B, and I will first read the resolution, and then we'll have roll call voting. Whereas to qualify for long-term facilities maintenance revenue, Minnesota Statutes 123B.595, Subdivision 4, states a school district must annually adopt and approve a 10-year facilities plan by July 31st for commissioner approval. Whereas the school district has developed a 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan consistent with this law, therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 829 approves and adopts the attached 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan for fiscal years '26 on the 17th of July 2025.
I'll second.
You'll second that? Okay. Amy? Roll call.
Yeah, Murphy?
Here.
Scott Demille?
Yes.
Grant Schefter?
Yes.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Darren Hoover?
Yes.
Charlie Bree?
Charlie Greve?
Yes.
Dave Dunne?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Motion for item C.
I make a motion to approve the LTFM statement of assurances.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion on that or anything you want to say?
No, that's kind of the cover sheet that goes in with it that just applies all the appropriate laws.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item D, and we also have a resolution with that, which I will now read. Let it be resolved that the governing board of entity of independent school district number 829, Wasika Public Schools, located in the state of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision and regulation of interscholastic activities and athletics referred to in Minnesota statute section 128C dot 01 to the Minnesota State High School League and so hereby certifies to the state commissioner of education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further resolve that the school listed is authorized by this, the governing board of, of said school district or school to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League and participate in the approved interscholastic activities and athletics sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. Further resolve that this governing board or entity hereby adopts the constitution, bylaws, policies, rules and regulations of said league and all amendments to thereto as the same as are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook on file at the office of the school district or school or it appears on the league's website as a minimum standard. And I think, all right. Okay, see here. Is that it?
Nope.
Nope? Got more?
Governing.
Governing.
At the top of the next page.
It must be off, my page is here.
It's up here.
Yeah?
Put it on the next one. Next page. Next page.
Yeah?
Right here.
Oh. Governing and participation in said league-sponsored activities and athletics for the administration and responsibility for determining student eligibility and for the supervision of such activities and athletics are assigned to the official representatives identified by this governing board or entity. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Second?
I think I just, this is an annual resolution that we do for the Minnesota State High School League, recognizing that this is the avenue for our students to participate in activities and athletics across the state and have access to all those exposures to those activities. And so, while we, we recognize that there's laws and policies that we have to localize to ourselves, we know the high school league is the avenue that, that our students have to participate in, in these activities across the state, so.
That's kind of the big umbrella of overall athletic.
Correct.
And activities.
And activities, yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion or any discussion? Okay. All in favor of the mo...
It's a roll call.
Oh, yeah, roll call. Okay. Amy?
Anne Margu?
Yes.
Scott Dammel?
Yes.
Grant Schefter?
Yes.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Darren Bruger?
Yes.
Charlie Greve?
Yes.
Dave Dunne?
Yes. All right, moving on. Motion for item E.
I'll motion for item E. Point designated MSHSL representatives.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Questions? Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item F.
I'll make a motion to approve item F. The reviewed policies, 533 wellness, 534 unpaid meal charges, 535 service animals in school, 604 instructional curriculum and 607 organization of grade levels.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
One thing I will point out, there, just a minor change to 534, you'll probably see it in your packet if you click on the link. There's language on the first page about providing students with alternative meals if they don't have money in their lunch account. That's no longer our practice or legal, and so we're striking paragraph D there of article two as the only change for this particular policy.
It ran out before.
What's that?
Didn't they get removed before?
I thought we had talked about it, yeah, but it's removed again if it needs to be, so, yeah. It's been, it's been out of practice for a long time.
Yeah.
Very good.
All right. All, are all in favor of approving the reviewed policies, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item G.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 to 2027 master agreement with building technology staff.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions on that? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item H.
Make a motion that we approve the 2025 to 2027 master agreement with the custodial and maintenance staff.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Questions? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And finally, a motion for item I.
I make a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 superintendent evaluation.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion on that or comments, questions?
Do you want me to read any of it?
Yeah, if you would mind reading a summary, that'd be great.
Okay, so the superintendent evaluation committee met earlier this week. All board members were asked to complete a one-year-end evaluation based on the three goals set for Dr. Hudspeth. Goal number one for the 2024, 2025 strategic plan implementation scored five, four, highly effective and two effective. The board overall agrees that training is being done effective and efficiently and there's strong leadership in this area. Goal number two, community engagement, three highly effective and three effective. Communication is good, information is being pushed to community members, but there is limited availability for feedback. We're going to continue to enhance and utilize the school website and Facebook to push more information. Goal number three, effective and efficient operations, making a recommendation and facilitate a decision on the district facility plan specific to Hartley Elementary. Again, three highly effective and three effective. Dr. Hudspeth has done a good job of guiding the board through options and timelines. Overall, the greatest strength is the strategic plan implementation. Eric has high expectations of himself and others and holds them accountable to the strategic plan. For the evaluations that were completed, the goal that had the greatest challenge appears to be goal number three, effective and efficient operations with the Hartley Elementary decision, simply because everyone has their own idea on what should be done and the timeframe on which it should be done.
All right. Thank you.
Very good.
Any comments? Thoughts?
I very much appreciate the work that the board puts in to support our district, support me and our leadership team, and, and the feedback is, is always welcome because we're always, we're only as good as our next step to get better, right? And so I think that's what we, we strive for as a school district, is continue to grow and learn. And so I really just appreciate the time that, that everyone takes into, takes to work. This is a, not a come to a few meetings and then think about it again in two weeks type job. So the work you do as school board members is very much appreciated as well. And as you all well aware, one of your biggest times allocations is with me, and so I appreciate you putting that time in to, over the course of the year, and, and this feedback will help me to get better. Coming in August will be some revised goals and ideas for the next year, so think about what comes next.
Great. Thank you. Right. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Just a note here that our next workshop is going to be on Thursday, August the 7th, not too far away. And it's going to be a longer meeting, hopefully. Going to try to start about four o'clock and might run about three hours and we're